Good afternoon. My name is John Kilcoyne. I'm on the Select Board here in Sterling with our town administrator, Bill Caldwell, and Chris Pickett, the chairman of the Finance Committee. And we're here just to kind of, you know, very loose and informal environment go over the warrant and the municipal budget and probably have a few comments on the school department budget, but not a lot since we have no final say over that and I don't think that's going to be done until town meeting or thereafter. So with that, I don't know, Chris, if you want to start or talking, I mean, about the articles or if you want to share with us the Finance Committee perspective on the overall process, I think is how we usually do this. And then, and then we get into just discussing the articles, the more important ones. There's obviously there's some in here that would just be a waste of time right now, although we will comment on them, just so people are aware. We just want to make people aware and inform them of what's on, what's going to be at town meeting so it's not a complete surprise. And Bill, I think also this is posted on our website.
Yep, everything is on there, the budget, budget presentation, the warrant and the school department information as well.
Good, good. If you want to take it and give us a little finance perspective, that'd be great.
Thank you, John. So this year, the Finance Committee, as well as the Capital Budget Committee, met on numerous occasions and went through with a fine-tooth comb the budget that was presented to us by Bill. And we did our best to make sure that it was fiscally responsible and that it was as conservatively, you know, tight as, as possible. And I think we did a good job with it. I think Bill did a fantastic job submitting it. And that's the budget that we're going to present to you here today as well as at town meeting.
Perfect. So I guess we can start with the articles. We'll go one, one by one, give at least a summary. The first one is going to be the operating budget for the town. That motion will be the raise and appropriate the sum of $12,715,727 and use an additional $580,176 from other sources, which are the ambulance receipts, perpetual cemetery care, and the Water Enterprise Fund to fund the operating budget. This one will take a little bit longer since it does have the omnibus budget attached to it. So I think we're probably going to highlight some of the bigger increases or changes that we'll see from previous years. And we can go through those now. Two different accounts on here become combined. The first one is that of the Town Accountant. In previous years, it's been funded from different accounts. This year, we are combining it into one rather than funding it from three different spots. The other one would be the Town Planner. The second one of note is going to be a 16% increase, and that is of the audit expense. John, you've been on the Audit Committee, if you want to speak to any of that, but this is the first, first increase in like six years.
Yeah, we had a great deal with Roselli Associates, Tony Roselli from Boston, our audit firm. I took over a number of years ago. I was on the search committee for them and I think we got a very good accounting firm. They do 90% municipal audits. And they kept that rate at $21,500 for as long as I have been here, as long as they have been here. I think I've been here on the Select Board a little longer than they have, but not by much. And this year, they increased their rate up to $25,000. Again, that's the first time. And I think five years, I think you're right. And costs have gone up, there's no, I mean, that, that's just indicative of the entire budget in all communities and many of the articles of the last two years, the inflation is a legitimate factor, a major factor in all this, and I think they thought so too. And, but they give us, they give us a very thorough audit. The management letter speaks for itself every year. Nine years ago, it wasn't always the way. It's no one person's fault, it's nobody's fault, but things get lax. The auditors weren't as detail oriented. And when Mr. Roselli came in in his first year, he, well, we knew things were off. But since he's been here, we've had basically a bond rating of, I think it's AA, it's third highest bond rating given out to municipalities and agencies. So anyway, that's a long-winded answer for what the audit increase was. I shortened that up if we're going to get through this, I think. But, but that's where the 16%, not a big monetary number, but sprinkled throughout, it does, you know, account for the overall increase at the end. So whatever other comments you have, Bill, on specifics.
The overall budget does show, unless it's a contractual increase, a COLA, Cost of Living Adjustment, increase of 3% for employees between last year and this year. We have been working on getting folks into the correct grades and steps after we did a compensation study. So some of those percentages may be a little bit higher as they were regraded or on a different step than they were in the past.
Yeah, I mean, a couple of, Chris, you can pop in anytime here, it's just my two cents on, on some of these items, but after audit, I mean, for instance, what Bill commented on was contract and the contract wages as well as the classification. The Council on Aging is 10%, 10.27% higher, but again, there was an adjustment made to our director to salaries and operations were a little higher, again, transportation, oil and gas, inflation, et cetera. DPW, even though it's over three, it's 4.38%. Again, that's just across the board type increases and given the inflationary impact of, of energy costs, whatnot, and, and repairs, et cetera, that was, to me anyway, surprisingly low. And we're trying to catch up with their DPW with a great crew and we're a little, probably still behind. We're making some good improvements in the equipment machinery and the people. So that's, I thought that was very reasonable.
One of the big drivers in there is our trash contract with Casella with the recycling and trash pickup. One of the other big items of note is the IT expenses. That would be the hardware, software, compliance and the services that we have. That's about a 10% increase. One of the changes that you'll see on the inspectional services would be the use of the revolving funds for the inspectors for plumbing gas. Rather than having them pay directly out of the taxation, this would be utilizing the fees that they collect as building increases and decreases in town. Do you want to speak to the insurance or benefits?
Well, that's a 9.1% increase over the past year. I can't remember, I have last year's numbers, but that's probably consistent with where it has been. And if there's no, that's one of the fixed costs. There's nothing we can do about, about the insurance in any budget. We look, frequently, we're looking at competitive carriers. It's kind of a game. Every company, every municipality does it. They look, they try to get the lowest possible insurance rate for the town and there just aren't any other options that are like significantly less, although we will, our management team will keep looking every year, but that's a fixed cost and that, that is what it is. So I don't know if your, what Fincom thoughts were on that, but.
No, I, I think they had done a fine job in getting the number down actually because again, it's something that gets provided to us by the insurance carrier. And it originally started out over 10%, I believe, to sort of have it come down and fall in the 9% range. Unfortunately, it's kind of the nature of the beast when it comes to insurance. We're at the mercy of the providers.
There was a 10.5% increase on the health insurance side, which is pretty comparable to most towns. And it was a minus 6% on the dental side. We also had some, some other insurances go up. There are no new positions being added this year in the budget, so there is no new FTEs. The overall budget increases for the town is about 3.7%, which is about $475,000. We did have some debt come off. We also have some new debt come on. Unless you folks have any other notable items on the.
No, just last year, insurance cost was a 10.28% increase. And information technology was 15.25% as we've made a fairly significant investment in that as well. And that is absolutely crucial to maintain up state-of-the-art computer systems, software, you know, maintenance and firewall protection and virus protection, especially today with what's going on. If you don't do that, you're exposed. We were very exposed, again, before Guardian Technologies. I think they're as good as any out there. And again, I was on that committee where we looked at four, five, maybe six, and the IT committee did a great job on that as well. Amrit Kumar, our former moderator who was in IT. So I think we're getting a good value on that. And again, that's 10% increase and again, that's, I'll bet that, again, that's down from last year, but that's not surprising and probably one of the most valuable budget items we have as far as the overall operations goes.
Anything else on the budget from Finance?
I don't think we're all set.
Perfect. That was Article One, all of the information for the budget, a budget presentation, which goes over the levy, what those changes are, the historical tax rate changes, some of the highlights on the impacts, the excess levy capacity, different salary and wage increases. We do have two outstanding contracts that have not been completely settled 100% at this time, and how we manage our reserves, capital items. That is all online and where our spending goes. You can see that all at sterling-ma.gov. Second article would be the Wachusett Regional School District Assessment. That number this year is $13,135,104. That shows a 4.91% increase on the assessment. That would be for our students in the Wachusett School District. We also have a couple dollars, $80,000 that go for an out-of-district placement. So this includes the assessment and any of the capital needs that are being borne by the town built into the assessment. Chris, do you have anything major on that?
Oh, I think the big thing to remember with Wachusett in the regional school district is that they have a new administration. They're doing a lot of cleanup. They said they've, they're going to try and cut this budget, but in the interest of time, the, the school committee ended up approving the budget. Hopefully, there'll still be some cuts that can be addressed on the floor at town meeting. But at this point in time, the Finance Committee did recommend the approval of this budget.
Yeah, Finance Committee did a great job. We were at a number of those meetings and we've been at the school committee meetings as well, Mr. Caldwell and myself and, and Chris has been, I think, at one or two. But it's, again, we don't have a lot of control over it, but as Chris alluded to, they had a very rugged year up there with losing, I mean, with retirement of the previous superintendent and two or three people leaving their positions at about the same time last year. So they've been playing catch-up with the budget. They have put one together. And as Chris said, it's right now 4.91% will be our assessment. It looks like 4.87 due to outplacement offset. But we're hoping, they're still, I don't know if there's any news, but they're hoping to get their earnings and deficiencies account certified by the DESI, Department of Environmental and Secondary Education. And I think that date is April 15th, I'm not sure. And if they get that, that's, it was going to be about $850,000 and that might lower our assessment to 4% or below, which would be very, very good. But again, the operating budget is 3.71%. That's down from last year and does not have any offsets except the normal, whatever the normal smaller ones are. So I think it's, you know, right now, that would lead us to four, including the schools, Montech was 4.8, I'm sorry, 4.35%. We'd be at about 4%, 4.29%, and we're hoping to get that down under four. Just an overview.
So that's the Wachusett Regional School District. The third article is the Montechusett Vocational Regional School Assessment, which comes in at $1,018,231. That is an increase of just over 4% at 4.35%. They have a pretty, pretty regular assessment increase around that number and pretty strong budget presentation. That would be the first section of the warrant, which would be the three major operating budgets. The next section would be how we manage some of our reserves in the consent calendar. These are all going to eventually, barring any complications and being, items being held, would be lumped together. This is Articles Four through 12. The first one is the snow and ice deficit. That number right now is at $225,000, but that is going to decrease. That is for the plowing and maintenance of the roads in the winter. The next one is going to be the elected officers' compensation, Select Board, assessors, Board of Health members, Planning Board, DPW Board members, Town Moderator.
And there've been no changes in that, right?
No changes in that. Article Six is that of the light board compensation, and there is no change in that from the previous years. Stabilization Fund, this year, we had about $2 million in free cash. It is our job to try and reinvest some of that into our different reserve accounts. One of them is the stabilization fund. Couple of years ago, at the beginning of COVID, about $250,000 of it or $300,000 of it was used to offset the tax rate. This would be in an effort to rebuild that amount, 250,000. That brings the balance of the stabilization, some folks call it a rainy day fund, up to 1.1, almost 1.2 million dollars. Article Eight would be the Capital Investment Fund, where we would be moving $400,000 of free cash into the Capital Investment Fund, bringing that balance before any spending up to about $3.4 million. Do you folks have any comments on the Capital Investment Fund, dealing with it a little bit more often?
I just think we thought, you know, as a, as a committee, that the, the fund could, could stand some adjustments or future consideration, but the committee did vote to approve the transfer of the $400,000 into this fund as well as the stabilization fund. There was approval by the full board. It's always good to reinvest in the community and having these funds make things like COVID a lot easier to bear, you know, and other unforeseen events that require, you know, sizable funding. So it's always good to have money in these accounts.
Yeah, the, the, if all articles are passed, including the recommended articles, spending from the capital fund, and just so you know, I mean, just so people do know that, our capital fund is money that's been put into that fund, as Bill said, a rainy day account like stabilization. When money is spent from it, it doesn't raise the tax bill, it doesn't raise the, has no effect on the tax rate. So it's a good thing. Some towns don't have one at all. And we've, over the last 20, 30 years, going back at least that long, people, folks in Sterling have maintained a pretty healthy capital fund, and as Bill said, we're trying to build up the stabilization fund. So when we do need extra spending, and this last year and this year, perfect examples of why, when you get into these inflationary times, it won't raise the rate now. It will bring, capital is always, in my time, in my 18 years and various committees here, has been over 3 million, was really over 4 million at one point. So it's gradually gone down, but it hasn't gone down by leaps and bounds. And I think the Finance Committee folks, previous boards of Selectment, et cetera, have managed it pretty prudently and people before us. And it's, it's going to be at about 2.6 million when it's, when all of a sudden done after town meeting, assuming everything is passed as, as presented. That's still a very healthy balance, whether or not we want to get that back up, I mean, in future years, but to 3 million or more, maybe, we'll, you know, we'll be looking at that and talking about that next year, how we want to do it. The financial blueprint we put together in the case, it should be a certain percent of either the overall budget or the depreciation expense in the municipal budget every year. That's, that comes and goes, it goes up and down, so it's hard to track that. But anyway, it's a good fund to have. If you don't believe me, you can ask a couple of our neighbors and they'd love to be in our position with this. That's it.
Article Nine is the OPEB Trust Fund. That number would be $217,000, moving from free cash into there. This would pay the other, for the town's other post-employment benefits with basically the retiree healthcare, once it becomes fully funded. It is about a $15 million liability to the town. The balance is just over 1.3 million, assuming this is voted. Annually, we also, for Article 10, create a reserve fund. This would allow for transfers at the end of the year for any accounts and items that are overspent. This would move $100,000 from free cash into the reserve fund for the year.
Did we spend all of that last year? Did we? Okay, we usually do so.
Article 11 would be ambulance receipts to the Capital Investment Fund. In Article One, I mentioned that we use ambulance receipts as an offset to the budget. That's true. This would be, we'll get to a capital item later, the purchase of a new ambulance, they would be using those receipts to pay back the town. We are basically operating in the Capital Investment Fund as our own bank. And over the course of three years, we will reimburse that account. Article 12, there are prior year warrant articles. There are a handful of them, amounting to $22,664, that can be recaptured, that were, the project is complete, and that can be sent back into the Capital Investment Fund. That's the end of the consent agenda. In the case that they are all accepted and one is not held, they will be lumped together and voted collectively at the town meeting. The next section is the Water Enterprise Fund. There are two articles in here, one for the water operating budget and one for the Water Capital Fund. The first, Article 13, approves a $1.3 million operating budget for the ratepayers. They fund that completely on their own. It doesn't have anything to do with the tax rate. So that would be their wages, salary, reserve fund of their own, benefits that pay to the town, and their debt for water main work. You will see some of that work happening this construction season. Any comments?
No.
The second one is the Water Department Capital. This would be for, again, using the funds that they have, either borrowing their retained earnings for four projects. Last year, we had approved about $150,000. Does that sound familiar for the new water source? So this would continue that work to find that. They are going to split with the town side, because both of them are going to use it, a wheeled excavator, the DPW, a replacement truck, and the bigger project, which would use some of their retained earnings and borrowing authorization, the upgrade of their variable drives, and generator replacement at the West Sterling Pump House. The total amount for that would be $980,000. Any comments on the Wire Department?
No, the last item was the 700,000 drives and the generator replacement at the pump house. And again, that's, those things have to be done.
The next section that would end the Water Department, the next one is going to be our capital projects. Traditionally, we'd broken them out into two, one with free cash and one with capital investment funding or other sources. But this year, we have put them together. They are all in one spot and that number would be a total of $1.6 million for capital items over the course of the year. We can go one by one and mention them so that folks have the information. If they haven't seen any of the Finance Committee, Capital Investment, Capital Committee meetings, for facilities would be extraordinary maintenance, some wiring for this building and also sprinkler compliance. That number is $40,000 and the funding source for that would be free cash. The second for facilities would be the windows of this building. Previous years, we've had a couple of projects, the sides of the building and basement. This would be $80,000 from the Capital Investment Fund for those to be replaced and we would eventually get into the third phase after that. And the third one would be security cameras at the library, both interior and exterior. That is $29,000 coming from free cash. Would you like to hand over the Fire Department?
Yeah.
Rotate through.
Yeah, there were five items from the Fire Department, and one is the additional apparatus cost, that's $25,000, and that comes out of free cash. So things, you know, as I say, that's why we, you know, we're lucky to have the free cash. It's sort of over, over, the money, over revenue, over saving, call it what you will, it's more revenue than, than we've estimated more revenue than spending from the prior year, which goes into free cash and allows us to spend it in the subsequent year from the general fund without a hit on, on, on the tax rate along with the capital fund. So I just want to get that in there. The Fire, the second item is an HVAC mini-split for the day room, that's $20,000, that's from free cash. The Jaws of Life Engine Number Four, $16,000 free cash. And two more, the attack hose and nozzle, that's a $35,000 item from free cash. And ambulance, one replacement, as what Bill mentioned before, that's $400,000 from the Capital Fund. That's something we could, in future years, borrow for it and bond it out, and it may be something, the next big item may be that, but we did have an ample reserve in capital and, and Bill said, we're going to be using that to fund this ambulance, sort of like the bank. So if you want to take the police part.
Sure. As for the police. Item number nine, the police radio license is a $10,000 cost, which will be going through free cash. That's a recurring expense. The police squad room renovation, item 10, is a $30,000 request for new furniture and fixtures and to spruce up the squad room, the police stations. How many years old is the police station now?
Twenty.
Yeah, so it hasn't had any improvements for our staff, so that money would go towards that. Number 11 for police is new computers, which is a $5,000 appropriation out of free cash as well. They update several computers a year, I believe, to keep them fresh and up to date. First item of the DPW is the Truck Eight Rehab for $10,000 out of free cash. The DPW also requested Truck Five replacement, so they'll purchase the truck and the equipment for that as well. That's a $70,000 line item. I'll do one more. DPW Truck Number Nine replacement with the purchase and its equipment is $135,000. That's one of the larger trucks that they would be using for everyday use as well.
I'll take that next one and I'll.
Sure. Number 15 for the DPW is road plates. It's a $10,000 free cash item. These are the steel plates that are used whenever they have to leave a hole overnight or repair a hole, they can put them on it. Saves the town the cost of renting them, which is how it's currently being funded.
The next two are actually going to be used, use multiple funding sources. They're both DPW items. One is a wide area mower for $80,000. $50,000 of it will come from the Capital Investment Fund and $30,000 will come from cemetery lot sales as those get sold. That money goes into an account, that funding is hardly ever used. And since this wide area mower will be used for the cemeteries, that funding will be used for that. The next one would be the wheeled excavator, as I mentioned on the Water Department. This would be split between the two departments for $75,000, $20,000 from free cash, $15,000 from the cemetery lot sales that will be used at the cemetery as well. And over the last couple of years, we have sold off and auctioned off various, various pieces of equipment that would allow $40,000 from an account of sale of used equipment to be funding part of this. The largest item, one of the largest items on this is the, also part of the DPW. This project is on the tip, the Transportation Improvement Plan. The town has to bear the cost of the design, however, the state would cover the construction. Right now, it's estimated about $4 million construction project. This would be for the design of Route 140 and 62 intersection. They are looking at a rotary there, so this would be the second year of the funding. And the subsequent years would. the subsequent years would be significantly less. Currently, I think the project is looking at FY '26, or FY '27 for potential construction, so we need to get that finished up. I think the next couple.
Yeah. Open Space Committee has requested an approved trail maintenance of $6,000, again, from our free cash. Historical Commission has requested $8,000 for gravestone repairs. I've done that before, obviously. The school security, I said Holden, $100,000, key fob entry and cameras, and that's coming out of the capital investment fund. And the town clerk, election equipment, it's kind of old, and it's, it really is in need of being replaced and upgraded. We all know what election problems, when they occur in this country lately, and we don't want any like that in Sterling. And the aerator has requested the recreation department, and that's from free cash. So some, a lot of the capital or infrastructure request improvements are coming from the capital fund. And again, people can say and argue with a lot of these, are they really necessary? Well, they're not, they're not emergency-type items, but they ultimately, if you don't approve them, like for instance, on this one, for $16,000, about a cent on the, not even a cent on the tax rate, the fields are kept in good shape, it lowers maintenance and fertilization and everything else that we all go through in our own backyards, and it has to be, have to be aerated, and renting is gonna, it costs just as much if not more. So I think that, again, just an example, these things have gone, been gone over by the Finance Committee, Capital Committee, and not as much by the Board of Selectmen, but enough that we're very well aware of, having sat in those meetings, the reasons behind the request. I don't know if you want to take the last couple, Bill or Chris?
Sure. Item number 24 on the list is an administration. This is the East Lake, Wash, East Lake Washecom treatment for $19,000 out of free cash. The Wachusett Greenways have requested $1,600 out of free cash. The Sterling Land Trust received $1,600 out of free cash. And then, something we discussed in, in one of the Finance Committee meetings was a grant match and engineering account to be established, so this $30,000 coming out of the capital fund, capital investment fund, is money that we can use to match for if a grant happens to come up during the year, which requires the town to match funds. In years past, we haven't had any earmarked money for this purpose, so we haven't been able to move forward with the grants. This would allow us to have money for unforeseen engineering costs, as well as matching funds for those, those grants that pop up every time and again. And the last request for capital projects is the fair committee requesting $30,000 for insurance for the Sterling fair, and that will come out of free cash as well.
So that will be a complete vote. Anyone could hold an item if they want more information. Obviously, questions can be asked about any specific item, and that would require a two-thirds vote for passage. We did break out one capital item as a separate article, which would be a DPW feasibility study. DPW facility is a little bit older, they are looking at all of the options, which could range in various different costs if it was to remain in the same building, a new building in the same location, or having to purchase land and build a new building, but this would be the study to allow for that, and the ranging costs down the road vary depending on what option it is, but this gives us the exploration to figure out what we need to do with the building itself.
So the first question that needs to be answered when, when town meeting, this doesn't mean we're building a brand-new DPW facility, right?
Correct.
Okay. It's just our option to study the best possible alternatives going forward. Right, okay. Just want to get that on the table, because we're gonna get that question.
Yes. That's the end of the capital improvement plan section. The next one would be personnel and human resources. We did a compensation study, as I mentioned previously. This would be updating the personnel bylaw information to reflect that. Article 17 would be the job classifications. There are ten graded positions. We do not use grade one, and the top grade would be grade 10, where the DPW director falls. There are a couple other grade seven and nine that do not have any positions at this time. Article 18 would be the compensation schedule, is the salary schedule reflecting the 3% COLA going into fiscal year 2024. Article 19 would be the compensation schedule for the qualifier force, reflecting that 3%. Article 20 is the stipended positions. We did enumerate a couple others that were built into budgets. Article 21 would be the miscellaneous positions, reflecting some of the changes and bringing in the state minimum, since that has changed in the last couple of years. And Article 22 is the longevity schedule, based on folks' years of service in the town. It replaces the existing one with a new schedule.
Based on amounts.
Right. Yeah. Dollar amounts rather than percentages. The next section would be local acceptance statutes. There are three in here. One of them will be a no motion, no action, since we are currently functioning there, it would have to be a ballot question. The first one would be for nomination papers, not requiring the day that it would be due on a Saturday, would be business days during the week. That's Article 23. Article 24 would be the veterans property tax exemption. There are several different tax exemptions. Chris, maybe you want to speak to this one, since it's more your bailiwick?
Yeah, I'm not, I wasn't exactly sure of which ones in this article, I'm not familiar with it, but veterans exemptions, there's a number of different ones that cities and towns are allowed to adopt, and these exemptions do receive reimbursement from the state to a certain percentage, so depending on what they're looking to put forward here, looks like they're looking at a 22F.
Which decreases the residency requirement for the veterans.
Which decrease, right, which would typically be a two-year requirement, it'll decrease it to one year, so any qualifying veteran who lives in the community for at least one year as of July 1st will be able to qualify for this. This would allow residents, veteran residents that move here from other towns to get their veteran property tax exemption sooner than later.
I think it affects one or two people.
Yeah. Very, very limited.
At the most.
Article 25 will not have a motion, and we will not take any action on it, we'd have to have a ballot question accompanying it, but we do have an insurance policy that does cover municipal officer indemnification for them in their roles as serving the town. So we currently operate under this already, but that will be passed over. Article 26, as we move away from the GL acceptances into the general protective and zoning bylaws, would be an update to the general bylaw for trash user fees. We've obviously instituted a new trash and recycling system in town. The current bylaw does not allow anything above and beyond what is currently taken to be accepted, so this would allow bags to be sold for excess trash and the pickup to allow for that. 27 is the primary accessory dwelling unit bylaw article. There is a second one that will also be available. This would change what they are working on. There were some issues in the past relative to this. We did revise it last year at the town meeting and didn't provide the zoning board with sufficient guidance on how to ensure that the accessory dwelling units remain subordinate to the existing single-family structure. This is the primary article that they're focusing on, and should that pass, Article 28 would not be, have a motion, but this would focus on a couple items, just to give the zoning board a little more guidance.
Yeah, I think it clarifies a lot of the items in this area for, you know, additional accessory dwelling, as needed, these bylaws, some of them are very old and archaic, and this is an ongoing thing.
Article 29, temporary moratorium on non-medical marijuana establishments. We currently have one. This was voted in June 2018. Since then, the town has adopted provisions that regulate non-medical marijuana establishments. This is no longer needed, so this is just cleaning up some language. Repealing this section does not allow for new marijuana establishments in town, and the status quo remains, that we right now only have one facility.
That's really to clean up our bylaws to comply with state requirements, so.
Article 30 would be the acceptance of Primrose Lane. This has gone on for quite a while, and this would just take it as a town, town road. That ends these.
It was a nice one, I can't remember.
Article 31, that, Article 30 ends the protective and zoning amendments and general amendments. Article 31 would be a referendum question, whether we should keep and maintain the West Sterling Schoolhouse on the far, on the western side of 140 at 62. We have an old schoolhouse. This would question the town to get an idea if we want to keep and maintain that. There is going to be some expense in the case that we do keep and maintain that, but we want to find out from the legislative branch of the town, town meeting, whether that is something we are interested in. In the case that we want to, we'd have to look at some ADA compliance, electrical upgrades, well, septic, which is going to incur a cost.
And we don't know that cost right now. And I did, the select board vote, we voted to put it on the warrant, so the taxpayers, the voters could make a decision on whether they want to keep the West Sterling Schoolhouse. We don't necessarily recommend that, as we submitted it, but we did not recommend it at this time, and again, one of those things where I think that the entire town should take a vote on it, you know, I think FINCOM and Capitol are in the same position, same vote, and did not recommend it either, so.
We did actually recommend the approval of that article.
Article 34, sorry, 32, would be the naming of softball field, number one on Griffin Road, for Joanne Cummings, for her 35 years of service to the Town of Sterling's recreation programs. There are two citizens petitions. The Select Board Finance Committee don't take a stand on those. They are presented, looking at changing some of the principal use, uses in the, table of uses in the bylaws. That is Article 33 and 34. The first one, 33, would change from special permit to no, they are likely to have open lot storage of building materials, contractor equipment, and similar materials. Article 34 would change the principal use from no to special permit for retail sales, including antique shops in rural residential. 35 to 39 are animal control bylaws, which for the most part are updating the language based on general law changes and to make them clearer. So that would be amending sections 18, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 8, and 7. You have any comments on those?
Nope, I don't dare.
And the last one is the annual town election, which is on May 12 PM to 7 PM at the Houghton Elementary School, and the positions that are available are listed in the warrant.
And there's competition for a lot of things this year.
Yep.
My first sign go up on our, on our road for school committee, so that's good.
Any comments on anything else, Chris?
I do not. I, I think that this year, I want to commend Bill for, and John as well, for this year, the efficiency that the Finance Committee was able to operate this year due to the good planning and the timely information that we received from all the department heads, the town administrator, the Board of Selectmen. We had some spirited discussions, and I, I'm looking forward to town meeting, and I think that, you know, this budget is a very lean budget, there isn't any waste in here, anywhere that I, that I could see as a, as a taxpayer and as the chair of the Finance Committee, so I hope for a positive outcome at town meeting.
I feel the same way, I just echo everything Chris just said. I know this is Bill's first time through, I think, I think he came in last April, so for, I know you were at a town meeting, but the first time he's went through the entire municipal operating budget process, and felt like you were there for 10 years, to be honest with you. So I think we're very lucky to have Mr. Caldwell, he did a great job navigating FINCOM, Capitol, and the Select Board through this process, so I thank you for that. And before closing it, I, we're gonna have, I think, a PowerPoint presentation, I think, at, at town meeting to help out a little, but, you know, there were two, there were a couple of slides that'll kind of put it out there as far as, yeah, you know, our average single-family tax bill increase, it's gonna hopefully not be as high as last year, but it definitely will be around five, I'm guessing 5% at the end, the average family bill, but again, when you look at it, you can't look at it in, you know, in an isolated fashion. The second chart you're gonna see, not just the one showing the increase, is where we stand relative to, you know, our, our neighboring towns and communities, about 15, 15 of them, and you'll see Sterling is right in the middle at 6,655, starting with the low of Templeton, 4,136, and a high of, well, Bolton and Stowe in second place, there were 12,463. So again, we're legitimately right in the middle of all these, right, you know, behind Lunenburg, West Boylston ahead of Leominster and Rutland. So again, as Chris said, I think that, I think the management of the budget, I mean, people will complain about certain items being excessive, I don't know, or just not necessary, but a lot of people step up, they're volunteers, they do their best, and I think they put together, I think everybody here put together, FINCOM, Capitol, and, you know, with Bill's help, a terrific operating budget in an environment where inflation, I know is over 5%, I think it came down a little, thank God, but was 6%, it was as high as 9% a few months ago, so, and a 3.71 for our budget. I think that's good, but I'm just one voice on this whole thing, so. And we'll, we'll be having a PowerPoint, I mean, a presentation there, but this is all posted on the website. The school budget is also posted, I believe, on the website for any of you who want to take a good closer look at some of the items, or just refresh what we've, you know, talked about this afternoon a little bit. That's all I have to say. I, I don't think I've, I left anything on the table.
I think we're good.
I think we're good. Thank you very much.
Town, town meeting is May 1st.
Can I do this? Marley likes to do it.
Let me, let me.
Yeah. And that's it.